Call to order the city council meeting of February fifteenth, 2018, at seven thirty PM in City Hall chambers, or council chambers. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the flag salute. I'm going to ask that we just take a moment of silence and think about or pray, as you see fit, about the horrible activity and tragedy in Parkland, Florida. I'm going to pray, and I don't have any eloquent words that can really address that situation, but we just need to simply speak our hearts. And Heavenly Father, tonight we come before you, Lord, with heavy hearts, burdened by the horrible violence and tragedy that's come upon another one of our schools. Lord, we pray for the families, the mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers and extended families that have lost a loved one, either a student or a staff member, an adult, that laid their lives in the line of fire to save students under their charge, all sorts of terrible things that happen down there. Lord, we pray for those who survived that witnessed such horrific things. We ask for them to be healed, Lord, to find a place of healing. And Heavenly Father, we pray for this nation tonight. We need to come together with a national resolve to find the answers that will keep this from happening. We realize tonight, this could happen in our hometown, in our school districts, in this area. It could happen anywhere. It's a problem of the soul. It's the lack of compassion and human decency in society. It's the instruments of violence that people lay their hands on and do terrible things. Lord, we pray that you will help us to address this from every area, every venue, every which way possible, Lord, that we can bring this to an end. And we ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go through the agenda, I have to announce we're going to have an executive session. The council will have an executive session for personnel and legal matters tonight after the public meeting is closed. Approval of city council minutes dated February first, eighth, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions or corrections from council? Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, thank you. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests that I'm aware of tonight. Item, uh... Item eight. We're going to move item eight up. And resolution to authorize a levee system pump station review and backup power cost with AMEC. Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Resolution to authorize a levee system pump station review and backup power costs with AMEC, Foster Wheeler, Environment and Infrastructure. Be it hereby resolved, the city council, the city of Williamsport, authorizes the mayor and city controller to approve the attached engineering proposal between the city of Williamsport and AMEC Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure in the amount of $27,879 for engineering services to review and provide a cost estimate for backup power to the northeast and northwest Williamsport levee system pump station. Be it hereby resolved that the mayor and city controller are authorized to execute a resolution authorizing a levee system pump station review and backup power costs with AMEC Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure in the amount of and not to exceed $27,879.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Holliday?
Good evening, Mr. Allison, council and mayor. The proposal I, or sorry, the resolution I have for you tonight is between the city as well as Wood. I'm just shortening their name, AMEC Foster Wheeler Wood. Next time we'll just say Wood, so you're all aware. This resolution is to gather information on the pump stations regarding backup power. The reason that I requested AMEC Wood to give me this proposal is, as you know, myself, as well as Fran McJunkin from Lake Coming County, Matt McDermott from Lake Coming County, as well as Mike Miller from South Williamsport will be traveling the second week of March to Washington, DC. When we had initially traveled over a month ago, we had met with several congressmen. One in particular was Congressman Schuster. After meeting with his office, they had said, "We need to provide information stating that our pump stations and levee would have and be an environmental impact to the surrounding areas of Williamsport and Williamsport itself to be able to apply for the funding that we need." So I guess for, on our purposes and our end, to be creative with our wording and our application, one way to look at it is that if we do not have backup power to our pump stations, which we currently do not have, we will have a failure which will in turn cause an environmental impact. And that's kind of how I worded it to them. So to, I guess, show proof that we have that, I asked and Wood to provide this proposal. So this will be a desktop review. There are no boots on the ground. So that's why the cost is a little bit less than what we're typically used to seeing. Later, I will have Gaz here, who is the representative from Wood, to address specifically what that desktop review. She'll get into more nitty gritty details. What I want to let you know is, this proposal, I had also asked another proposal, which I did kind of brief Public Works on, on Tuesday. I requested that they provide us as well with an open ended contract to end in February of 2019. The reason being, we are traveling in March, as I had stated. So that is an extremely short timeframe and schedule for them to do the work that they need to do. And for the last over two and a half weeks, they've been working under good faith that this would be passed tonight. So I guess to eliminate those issues where they would have to be working under good faith, I asked them to do the open ended contract. And I think since they are working on the SWIFT plan, this already has arisen, and it's only been two weeks since we had our kickoff meeting for the SWIFT plan. Over the next year and a half, we might end up having more situations that arise that we need evaluation. And that open ended contract will allow us to just go ahead and work and not have to worry about any incidents that may occur on their end. So I'd like to introduce Gaz from AMEC Foster Wheeler Wood. And if you'd like to ask her any questions or if you just want to have her give you a quick overview, I think she's ready for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I can give you an overview, if you'd like, with some details. So the desktop analysis for the backup power cost is based on data that we've been collecting since 2012 when we did the initial levee certification. It includes inspection reports from the Army Corps. From 2010, we're waiting for the 2016 inspection reports in addition to condition assessments that our engineers had provided of the pump stations during our analysis then as well. We collected a significant amount of data, but it had never been compiled for this purpose. And so a significant amount of this effort was gathering and putting together all of that data so that we could assess the actual needs of each of those power stations so that we could cost their backup power. And the reason that we were looking at backup powers is because the Army Corps of Engineers had recommended that as part of one of your inspection reports. And they also acknowledged that the life of your system had passed its expectancy, and they had made some recommendations for that as well. In my proposal, we've acknowledged those deficiencies. And in the time that we have allotted, we're attempting to acknowledge as many as we can before the meeting that Rebecca has in DC to give you guys a cost that is as inclusive as possible. However, we will inevitably have items that will need further review in the future. And as part of the SWIFT plan, we need to provide schedule, budget, and then funding sources to be able to support the claims that the city of Williamsport will actually follow through with the repairs to the levee and getting it back up to its certification standards. So with that in mind, this is one of those incidents where we would need a better understanding of that cost and about the schedule that would be necessary to implement that. So I'll leave it open to questions.
Thank you. This was reviewed by Public Works?
Yes, Don handled it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did address this on Tuesday past, and we pretty much got the same report that we all just basically heard here. It's one of those situations, as we were speaking a bit earlier about this, it's, uh, this is obviously one of those continuing sagas we're going to be contending with for some time. The value that I see in this now is that a closer look at the pump stations and the backup systems now may relieve some problems we would base later on down the line, which may be more costly at that time as opposed to what they are today. So I understand the need for the study. The financing, the $27,879, it's a hard one to swallow to some extent here, but it's also a part of this continuing process we've been contending with. We do have the advantage of it being a not to exceed amount, so that's helpful to us at least anyhow. And we have full faith in those people who are going to be taking charge of what's going on here. So our committee decided to pass this on to the full body of council with the positive recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council members? Mrs. Katz?
When we met several weeks ago
Yes.
with you, did we discuss all of the pump stations or was it only the two that we were going to address?
Well, the request for, um... The request for language pertaining to the economic impact for a failure at Hepburn Street was a specific request that has been incorporated into this proposal. But in addition, and also Arch Street, acknowledging the potential issues that would arise from a power failure at Arch Street in terms of public health and safety. In addition to those two pump stations, we were requested to provide a cost for backup power for all because the Army Corps had established that as a recommendation.
I just wanted to clarify that it was for all of them, not just the two.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Mealy?
Two questions, I guess. A, just because it doesn't state it in the resolution itself, what is the source for the funding, the $27,000?
We are utilizing the bank funding that we initially had for the $500,000. I think we've used almost $20,000 so far, so we have quite a bit that we can utilize. And I think it's also important to touch on that anything that we utilize, even from present day past, we are able to utilize that as match for the state and federal level. And just one more thing that I wanted to add, I forgot to add earlier. I think it's very important, I know I had said this at Public Works, and I know we talked about it at our SWIFT kickoff meeting, but just to reiterate to council, the SWIFT plan, it is something that, as a city, we fall under the Baltimore District. And the Baltimore District has not reviewed a SWIFT plan. So I think that's really important that we keep in mind, and that's another thing moving forward as to why I think it's important that we have an open ended contract because, I mean, they've given us a rough layout as to what they think that we need to have. But there can be things that arise that they might not potentially see and we don't potentially see. And sorry, so what's your second question? I'm ready.
I guess my second question is, you don't go back indefinitely on this, Rebecca, but what exactly have we put into the levee so far? Bonnie?
We were supposed to get us the figures. Or Joe was supposed to get us the figures of what we've put into the levee so far.
So I can actually, I can actually email that information to you tomorrow because that's something that I'm giving to Penn Strategies tomorrow as well because they're working toward our RACB grant. And I know that it's over $600,000. I know it's definitely over that number, but to hone it down, you know, to the dollar and cents, I can send you all of that and where we've spent it and where the money came from as well and what it was for and what the date.
I don't need that much detail, but if you're doing defense strategies, then yeah, copy me, please. But I guess the reason I ask is, we've spent over $600,000 so far, and we haven't actually done any work on the levees, correct? Aside from a little rip rap work a couple of years ago?
We, no, that's actually, oh, yes, we did that as well as with... Well, maybe you want to go to detail about...
Oh, yeah, there you go, right.
I was not here last year. And I'm sorry, that should not be an excuse. But today, actually, I was giving information from Steve Mundrick and our flood control that I passed on to Gaz. And over dinner, we were actually talking about, "Well, this is great because this is one of the deficiencies we had, and we did meet that requirement." So I will let her touch on that.
So one of the deficiencies was testing, a certain type of testing on the pump stations for their electrical systems. And that was a deficiency that gave you guys an unacceptable rating by the Army Corps in your previous inspection. And based on the documentation that I received, I believe that that testing was completed. I'd like to say I looked at that on my phone, so I don't want to be held firmly on that. But also, we've started the relief well contract where we are rehabilitating and replacing relief wells along the levee systems.
Got it. And is that included in that roundabout $600K figure or is that not?
That is not included.
Okay.
And we have also replaced gates on our sluice pipes. And another thing that we will be working on in the next couple of weeks that we had deficiency on was we did not have a proper signage with the levee. So I will be working with our Public Works Department to get those up because that's something that we can do in-house.
Right, right, right. So we are actually gradually whittling down some of these deficiencies, perhaps not the freeboard issues and the major ones that are really going to be costly, but some of the minor stuff at least we are taking care of in addition to evaluations.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And I guess as a secondary part of that, I mean, we know that we're not going to get anywhere close to doing all the work with the remaining $450,000 of borrowing. But what do we anticipate having to spend of that on further studies, I guess? You know, I'm not saying that it's a waste of money because it's not, obviously. But I'm just trying to figure out, it surprised me, I guess, ever since I got involved in government, how much money one does, one entity does have to spend sort of examining things before any of the money goes towards physical improvements that are required. So what else are we anticipating coming through in terms of studying the issue, providing reports to X, Y, or Z? Sorry.
Nope, that's fine. And I think it's kind of just how Don had stated, you know, it's a tough pill to swallow. And these are not words to live by, but sometimes it takes money to get money.
Right.
And like I'd said, we, I guess, at this point, if we're over $600,000, we're going to talk about another probably $150,000, $200,000. That's still not even a million dollars. And we're searching for 10-plus million dollars. What I anticipate utilizing, maybe not the full $500,000 that was for bank funding, but I want to start looking into completing the rest of the designs for the levee. The reason being, so then that way, we can utilize that funding as match, the design is completed, and then we can take that to the Army Corps and to the government, to the congressmen, and say, "We've already done this much work. This is essentially why you should give us funding," which they are very proud of us that we're making these steps. As I had said at Public Works, so many municipalities, some of them don't even know they have levees. Anyway, besides the point. So then that way, once we receive the funding, we can begin construction immediately so that we're not on, you know, a 10- or 20-year span of waiting to get this construction done. So that's my ultimate plan, I guess, if that kind of answers the question for you.
I guess, but I guess what I'm establishing, for better or for worse, and I think we all know there's no way around it, is we're about to spend a half a billion bucks doing further studies predicated on hoping that those studies will serve to get us $10 million in grants. And if they don't, we won't actually have necessarily addressed very much as wrong with the levy period, correct? We'll have addressed a couple of things, but...
Yep.
Okay.
If you want to touch on it, you're more than welcome.
I think, I think there's some value in the desktop analysis because it helps to get a broad perspective of everything that needs to get looked at from the various sources, from both FEMA, from the Army Corps, in addition to construction issues and things that we would see only by digging in. So I think in the long term, it's hard to say what exactly we would need in the future. And that's why I think Rebecca requested the open ended option as a contract. We're trying to stick to what we have. But as we identify things that need a cost, for example, because there is a deficiency, and if we don't have that data, it's hard for us to put it in the plan to tell the Army Corps that you will spend X amount of money to complete something in order to be certified.
Got it. And I guess the final question, sorry, that was, it's been a hell of a lot more than two questions already. I apologize. But I think, what I think the final question is, is all this, all this data that we're currently compiling and the, and all the work that we will be doing, hopefully, when we receive the grants, thanks to the data, will, particularly the data, can we hang on to that? Will that prove useful to us once the work has been done? That is to say, I'm just trying to figure out, I don't want to wind up in a position like we're in again. We've ignored the levees for 40 years, 50 years, right? 60 years, actually. And, and now we find that, big shocker, it's going to cost us something on the order of $12 million to get the levy back in working order. I don't want to, we've been dealing with this almost since I've been on council. Clearly, we're going to be dealing with it for another four or five years bare minimum. And I don't want to, you know, when my daughter or somebody else's daughter's up here on council in another 20, 30 years, I don't want them to be looking at it again and being like, "Why didn't anybody deal with this?" So can any of this work carry us through for the next couple of generations?
Yes. That's why I, it's, so we, one thing, like I said, I had flood control give me information today. Another thing they had given me are all the designs for the pump stations. And I guess, I know it seems like they're not, it's all not the data compiled because at that point, when they were constructed, they didn't have those issues. But I guess so that's kind of like how you can look at it is, okay, so we went back to that information to try to get to what we're working at today. So then, what we're working at today will help us in the future. And actually, at our SWIFT kickoff meeting, I had stated to everyone, that is the long-term plan. After construction's begun, I want to start looking for more funding, more plans as to what we can do to maintain the system that we have. And there are options out there. I guess another, and some of this information, maybe we don't get the funding. I mean, that is, that's a potential. Maybe we don't get the funding utilizing this study that we're going to do. I don't want to, you know, bring down the joy of the room or anything like that, but that's a potential. But down in the long run, if we don't get the funding for the backup power for the pump stations immediately, maybe down the road in the four or five-year term, like you're stating, we can utilize this information to go for more grants or, in the long run, to have that. Because I think it's important, we need it.
Okay.
And if, maybe you want to touch on more, I don't know.
I agree. That's the plan.
All right.
Mr. Slaughter?
Thank you.
Yeah, kind of follow up to Liz's question. It says under, like, number one, on the assumption, is a feasibility study. So obviously, there will be a cost associated. So once we review and do this study, then we have to decide whether or not it's feasible. So I'm, again, wondering...
That is a very good point. I'm glad you brought that up. So the reason that this is not enough to actually decide if you can go ahead with making these repairs and stuff is because we don't have boots on the ground, and we don't have a current assessment that we can rely on in order to make that decision for you guys and say to you guys, "Yeah, it's feasible that you could just increase the capacity here, or it's feasible you could just add backup power. Maybe the plot of land isn't, you know, conducive to that, or maybe the utilities that are provided aren't conducive at a certain site." But that's, that's something that does need to be looked at, but in the timeframe that we were given, it didn't seem feasible for us to actually look at that. So our attempt here is to get a very high-level perspective of what you would need in a perfect world, that you got what you needed to meet your demand at your stations. And we're being conservative in our analysis so that as you pursue funding, the best scenario would be that you get more than you need. And in the feasibility study, you come in under. That would be our goal and our hope, really. And until we get to the point of doing that feasibility study, it just makes it difficult to say for certain if something would be possible.
So worst-case scenario would be that your desktop analysis, because you don't have boots on the ground, wouldn't be feasible at all because you're not exactly sure what you're looking at.
Well, the data that we're using, for example, we have pulled electrical data for the loads used at each of the pump stations. We have information on each of the pump motors and their horsepower that they require, as well as line diagrams for the electrical circuitry. So we are trying to get as close as we possibly can to establishing a feasible cost that's not outlandish. But at the same time, you walk into a pump station and you see maybe the walls are also cracking, or you look and maybe someone does an assessment of the pump, and maybe the pump also needs to be rebuilt. That's not something we're looking at right now. So there would possibly be more involved with actually rehabilitating a pump station. And I think that's where the study would go further.
Is there a rough estimate of a feasibility study? Or I guess it would depend?
Yeah, it would depend on the pump stations. For example, Hepburn is a very robust station. So that station would not be indicative of anything else you would experience. And it would be more of a case-by-case basis. We haven't looked closely.
What Liz was saying, just seems like a lot of studies in general?
There's a lot of information. I agree, it does include a lot of studies, and it seems daunting, yeah.
Yeah. I just didn't know if there was some way we could incorporate some of this in one study? But I guess we just keep going on? Because this has to be quick, I understand.
Yes.
I get it.
The preferred approach was to do just a feasibility study with boots on the ground and get everything done at once.
Yeah.
But because of the schedule, that didn't seem possible.
Okay. So, I mean, the feasibility study could be quite costly depending on what is needed. I mean, it's just that, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking out loud right now.
No, that's a valid point. And I agree, it could, it would incur significantly more cost than this study, for example. I have no rough order of magnitude to give you at this time. But I know that if you actually do get funding or if you get approved to pursue something further, a feasibility study would be required.
Right.
So that's why we threw it in there, to say we acknowledge that there would be a need, but it's not included here.
And so we weren't, so we have to do this quickly? Was it, were we aware of this due date? I mean, why, why are we so rushed?
So when we had our SWIFT plan, we had Penn Strategies there. And then I had also filled in Tom Keller, who is our lobbyist at the federal level. So for the information that they need for us to go in to DC in March is what is driving this schedule and kind of why we didn't do the holistic view of the pump stations. And originally, we had actually talked that that's what we were going to do. We had it kind of preliminary proposal, I guess you could say, with people entering the pump stations and then bringing in an electrician. And then, and then after speaking a second time, we realized it's too much and it's too rushed on their end, and we want to make sure that we cover all our bases. So I talked to Tom Keller on the phone, and then I reached out to Penn Strategies. And they had said more of a conceptual cost estimate is more of what we need rather than, you know, line item by line item.
Right. So, but were we aware of the March prior? Or we just, that was after we started meeting for the SWIFT?
No. So I had known of that deadline, but not for this study. We did, we did not come up with having that we would need this study until we ultimately got into our workshop for the SWIFT plan after our kickoff meeting. So that's kind of why it's so fast.
Yeah, that's fine. It's a little scary just because
Right.
It could be all for naught, it could be a moot point once we get into the feasibility. I mean, I understand what Liz was saying, we could spend $27,879. I'm not saying it's going to be irrelevant, I'm just saying.
The feasibility study would include... Um, the feasibility study would include all of the information that we're using here. So, I, I don't think it'd go for not. It would be utilized, it would just be furthered, and it would be refined, and more information would be added.
And, and more money. That's all.
Mrs. Katz?
I think we have to clarify here that most of this money that we've spent has been on studies. I mean, when you look at our book, it is this, this thick with nothing but studies. And all of it is relevant to what the government is demanding, uh, the knowledge of what's going on. Really, very little work has been done. And, and this is very frustrating all the way around. And I think we also have to keep in mind, even though you're going to Washington, there's no guarantee we're going to get money for anything at all, which is very frightening. So we do have to cover all of our bases all over the place. The one thing that I did, that I do want to question is, we have the flood control here in the city, and, and you are, have been working with pumps, our pumps, for how many years? And is any of their knowledge worth what's going into, I mean, can that not be coordinated? Because they probably know a lot of what's going on with the pumps, not only just desktop, but actual, as you would say, boots on the ground.
Mm-hmm. We did, um, have a conference call, and we've been trying to coordinate information as best we can that's relevant to this study. And I agree with you, your representatives in the city are our best resource for boots on the ground. So, we have tried to utilize that. We spoke with your city electrician, and, and I believe the, um, Steve...
Steve Mundrick.
Steve Mundrick was on the phone with us as well, answering questions about some of the pump stations as best they could. We also have a contact at Lechi Electrical, your, I guess, your contractor for electrical maintenance at the pump stations. So we are trying to utilize every resource that already exists, every base of knowledge that we can mine for information, we'd like to use before we try and, you know, reinvent the wheel.
So it's not just, uh, desktop. You really have got other information included in this.
Right. So, I guess, like she had said, the desktop analysis is mainly on their end, it's just them not physically coming to the city other than this evening. Boots on the ground are our people, just like she had said. And Steve Mundrick has actually been compiling more information, like I had touched upon. He gave me all the designs, um, for, uh, the pump stations that he has, and he said that he was going to be going back and looking for more information. Um, I actually found a, a, a study that we had done in the past that I was not aware of. It was under the wrong folder today, and that was actually right before we had dinner this evening. So, um, you know, in, in that study, actually, there was a cost involved, um, and there was an invoice. So I know, and I, I didn't have time to review it at that point, it was later in the day. Anyway, um, so there are things that have happened and been going on. It's just through the last couple of months on my end, researching all these, finding them, um, has, has been a little bit of a struggle, but it's, it's coming through. Um, and our flood control unit has been so open and so, you know, ready to, uh, jump in and, and help, uh, lending hand. And actually, uh, in between our conversations as, when we were deciding whether they should physically come and this be the entire feasibility study, or just the desktop analysis, I had already informed our flood control, hey, this is the date these guys are planning on coming. Um, they were preparing everything to come, and then I said, well, we've, we've, you know, re, re-looked at the proposal and what we're going to do. So, um, I think, I think there's a lot more, um, movement and behind-the-scenes activity going on that it's, it's, a lot of it is monotonous to explain, um, but, but it's not just on their end, I guess, as well. So it's kind of a whole collaborative, um, effort, and, and as well, it's not just the city either. Um, I have to really send out a, a huge thank you to, like, Coming County, especially Fran McJunkin, who has been doing so much research, um, and providing Gaz with so much information, so.
Mr. Henderson?
Uh, thank you. I, I have a question maybe for Mr. Pollock here. We're utilizing the, um, $500,000, um, debt was set aside in our bank financing for this. Um, we're told that we've already utilized about $20,000, is that, or, I'm sorry. Yeah, $20,000. Is that correct? We've only used $20,000 of that $500?
I'd say that'd be a safe assumption.
A safe assumption? Okay.
And I'm not sure about, I'm not sure that we're funded through that, um...
Okay.
But I'm not aware of them anymore.
Okay. So that's a safe assumption, that's, okay. Just, uh, wanted to confirm that and assure that up there. Uh, it's, it's tough, but speed is, is the issue here, um, and, uh, and what we're doing is we're giving, um, the tools necessary to our, our lobbyists, uh, in order to secure more funding for us. And it takes a lot of faith to do this. Because, I don't know anything about these, these levy, you know what I mean? And that's why, that's why, uh, we're, we're hiring you to do this, because we don't know. Um, but at the same time, since we don't know, uh, it takes a lot of faith, and that's why we have to really dig deep and, and try to justify, uh, borrowing, and that's what we're doing here. Just to remind everybody, we don't have $27,879. Um, we don't. We are borrowing it. Um, we've authorized it already, um, but we haven't borrowed it yet. Uh, and so, uh, this is that act of, of borrowing it. I mean, we, if we didn't utilize it now, uh, we would have the option to use it for something else, but only for another year. Right? Another year? How long is our drawdown period?
The bond issue.
Oh, the bond issue changed it?
When we issued the bonds, it was all drawn down as part of that bond issue. So we have the funds available in-house, um, for the appropriate projects.
Okay.
I think that we would need to discuss any, um...
Deviation?
Major deviation from the budgets that were put forward, forward in the initial borrowing.
So, all right, so we have, uh, that's right, we've rolled this over into, uh, our new bond issue. Um, anyway, it's, it's, uh, just something to think about. We are, yes, we've authorized it, it's kind of a done deal now. Um, and so to use it up, I guess, in this way. For a desktop analysis, it's, it's hard, but it's there. And in, in my way of understanding this situation, um, it's, it's a necessary evil, and, uh, and we have to just, we have to bite the bullet and go through with it. Um, so, anyway, that's, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
I think the point's still totally valid, Joel. We, uh, we went into debt to begin to satisfy our levy obligations. Um, there are many other things that we could have gone into debt to begin to satisfy, had we not chosen to do it for levies. So, um, and there, and the money could have gone into some physical repairs of the levy if it hadn't gone into studies. So, regardless, every time we make a decision to spend money on the levy, we are effectively choosing to borrow money because we have enough items that we could use borrowed money for, or, or our own funding forward there, that, um, that the, the fiscal responsibility thing doesn't really end just because the money's technically sitting in a bank account somewhere rather than, um, sitting in a, in a, in a line item, in our, in a borrowing one. So, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter?
I just have one final question. The open-ended contract, that is still the scope, within the scope of this work, or does open-ended, could that incur other costs outside of, or, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what open-ended contract means?
So, the, the nature of the request for the open-ended is only open-ended until the end of, um, until February 2019. And the purpose for that is because the SWIFT contract and the SWIFT plan is due at that time. And so the open-ended contract would provide a mechanism for these last-minute rush requests to get processed more quickly, so that, for example, instead of trying to figure out a way to do a four-week analysis in like a week and a half because of, because of trying to negotiate, um, those types of things, we could start sooner, and we could get results more quickly to you. But it would only really be to support this at that, that's why the, um, the timeline is in conjunction with the SWIFT plan as well.
It would, it would support this desktop analysis?
Not this desktop analysis. We have a currently open contract for the SWIFT plan, the system-wide, um, improvement framework that is going to be submitted to the Corps. And so that's what the open-ended contract would be in, supposed to support. I lost my word, sorry.
Okay. So, there could be additional costs incurred?
That's the reason.
For the open-ended?
Right.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other comments? I think, uh, I agree, it's, it's an act of faith, and it's a little bit of an act of desperation, too, because we, we desperately need, uh, a shot at that grant money. So, I thank you for, you know, undertaking all this to, we, we have to go in with some bullets.
Yes.
And I think, uh, just hearing you talk about, um, the, the levy and everything we're discovering that was there, and Ms. Halliday, like, you noted, you found some things. I'm sure there's other things, uh, in the historical, um, structure and the building of it that, that you're going to find. And I think, again, this isn't something we asked to do, it's been put upon us, but, uh, apparently, it's, it is good timing, since we have obsolete equipment that's outlived its life. Uh, we really haven't had a magnitude, uh, Agnes flood, uh, since, well, that was 46 years ago, so, yes.
All right. I'm with you.
But sometime down the line...
Will you knock on some more, Reggie?
I think everyone should.
Let's everybody knock on some. Um, sometime down the line, uh, it may happen again. And, the, when you think back, that was '72. Well, the levy wasn't that old then, uh, the equipment wasn't that old, so it was, it was well-able to handle that. So now, we're going to make sure that the next time it happens. And I really appreciate, um, uh, our engineers' plan to move forward, to compile all this information, uh, to have it ongoing. Uh, these are the kinds of things that are going to pay off for future generations if that's in place, that there's ongoing, uh, information being added, kept updated, um, problems being taken care of before they're big problems. Those are the good kind, kinds of things that we've talked about doing for future generations. And, um, it'll, it'll be another one of the benefits that come out of this. Did you want to say something?
So you did, you did bring up, um, a point that I would like to add. Um, you said about our, our infrastructure and it's kind of reaching our age. It's, it's reached its age, it's ready for retirement. Um, and that's kind of one thing, uh, in addition to this, uh, proposal and study that AMEC has been doing and, and, and is going to finish, uh, they're still in the process, is to separate all of the deficiencies that the Army Corps gave to the city and say whether their operation and maintenance, whether their upgrades, needed upgrades, or are they just upgrades? Um, and some of the things, um, for instance, uh, meeting the freeboard, that is something that is not Army Corps, that's FEMA. So, with that, I guess, converting the I-wall to a T-wall, so we have to do that conversion from the Army Corps mandate, but raising the levy to meet the three-foot, um, freeboard, that's FEMA's side. So, that's one thing that, um, I've asked them to do, is to say, well, you know, I'm looking at the lifespan of this, and they're saying that we have to do this conversion to meet their standards that they've changed. Um, and our equipment, our, our infrastructure has met its life's plan. To me, that doesn't seem as operation and maintenance, that is an upgrade to meet their standards. So, that should be the funding the Army Corps needs to take care of. Um, so, in addition to that, though, it's kind of funky how it works, because you have to have, you have to meet the freeboard to change the I-wall to a T-wall. So, then it's like, well, where does the funding, what, how does that work with funding? So, we, we, we're going to change this over to a T-wall, and, and in my opinion, as well as, um, other engineers' opinions, um, that's, that's the Army Corps', uh, funding issue. But then, well, how, where does that come into play for the, the freeboard? So FEMA is requiring that, so shouldn't FEMA pay for that portion of the conversion? Um, another thing is, so, the, the relief wells, yes, probably the, uh, the, the, um, just the rehabilitation, cleaning out the sediment, now that's operation and maintenance. But that, that infrastructure, that's also met its lifespan. So, the replacement, should it be the city or should it be the Army Corps? Um, so these are other things that, again, as I had stated, you know, there's a lot behind the scenes going on, so we're trying to eliminate the cost as much as possible that the city has to look for. And, and as Bonnie had stated, maybe we don't get the funding and we would end up paying this cost. So with these analyses, it can show that we're just cutting back the cost for us. If, so, you had just brought up that point, and I wanted to touch on it, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other further questions from council? Good discussion, fellow council members. Uh, Mrs. Frank on the question then, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
...presentation tonight. Okay, we'll move back up to item five, appointment, Brandon Park Shade Tree Commission.
Good evening, members of city council. Before you, I have a gentleman named Lee Friedman. He's not here tonight, but he was interviewed by the Public Works Committee this past week, and his appointment is for the Brandon Park Commission and the Shade Tree Commission. He is a resident of the city, lives on Marcus Street, has been involved in forestry for over 40 years, and also landscaping, and I'm sure he's going to do a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, can I have a motion?
Uh, a second.
Okay. Uh, this, uh, public work, oh.
Yeah, we met with Mr. Friedman briefly before our Public Works meeting the other day, and, uh, as we all know, we don't really use that as an interview opportunity, but more of the opportunity to become familiar with each other. And, uh, he, uh, presented his credentials, which were, I think, substantial enough that I think that his decision-making will serve the commission very well. And, uh, we didn't have much trouble passing on a positive recommendation for his appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Noviello. Um, any comments or questions from council? If not, um, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item six, uh, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2018 John Deere 5075E utility tractor. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2018 John Deere 5075E utility tractor, be it hereby resolved that the city council, the city ordinance board authorizes the purchase of a 2018 John Deere 5075E utility tractor with attachments from Deere and Company in the total amount of $21,802.63 out of the flood control, general flood equipment line item 2280-6401, be it further resolved that the copy of this resolution be forwarded to Deere and Company.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So...
Second.
Motion in a second. Um, Mr. Winder?
Good evening, members of council. Um, before you, is a resolution to authorize the purchase of a new John Deere tractor. Um, it is for the flood control department. It would be a dual-wheel rear, or dual rear-wheel tractor. The current one the flood control department uses is a 2001. With mowing 11 miles of levy, it is very hard on the tractor with the incline. Over the past two years, I would say we put roughly $10,000 into the current one, which is basically half of what we're looking at for the purchase of a new one. Um, the money was allocated in the general fund for this purchase. I think, uh, Mr. Noviello pointed out at Public Works that in 2001, we paid $40,000 for the current tractor. At this point, we're getting almost half of that money back. Um, it is definitely a needed asset for the flood control department to take care of the levy. Um, it's used for multiple purposes, not just cutting grass, but, um, you know, if a tree comes down on the side of the levy, it's very hard to take a heavy piece of machinery over there to remove it, so with this tractor and the dual rear wheels, it makes it a whole lot easier. It's made specifically for the levy itself. So with this tractor and the dual rear wheels, it makes it a whole lot easier. It's made specifically for the levy itself. About all I got.
Okay, uh, it was reviewed by Public Works. Mr. Noviello?
Once again, Adam came before the committee with his hat in hand and, you know, doing the usual asking. So, but we understand that. And as we all just reminded ourselves just a few moments ago here, uh, equipment tends to run its course after so much time. This is a piece of equipment that I know gets used pretty hard, particularly with the kind of terrain that it has to traverse. And I've seen that in action. And in years past, in my youth, I actually ran that machine, or a similar machine. Uh, I don't think we've had one that's forty-seven years old. But, uh, so we know that, uh, you know, that, uh, this is something that's gonna be necessary as we go along. We also do some work, I think, on the levy, little side part of the levy as well, is that correct? So there's a responsibility there at the same time. And I'm thinking with...
And old light coming.
And old light coming.
Yes.
I'm thinking with about ten thousand dollars of repairs in the past, it suggested our repair service in-house has kind of done its job over the years as well, to bring us to a point where we're at a stage now where this just tapped out. So, uh, after, uh, Adam's urging, we, uh, we decided to pass this on to council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments from council members? Okay. Uh, Mrs. Franklin, the question, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Item seven, resolution authorizing a twenty-seventeen state fire grant. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution twenty-seventeen state fire grant. Whereas the Williamsport Bureau Fire has been awarded a grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of new five, five-inch firefighting hoses and radio alert pagers. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Williamsport authorizes the Bureau Fire to expend the funds granted under the twenty-seventeen state fire grant program as per the guidelines outlined in the agreement form for the reference project attached hereto. Hereby the appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to accept the grant.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Um, Chief Heckman?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Allison, members of council. Uh, for you tonight, we have the two thousand seventeen eighteen Office of the State Fire Commissioners Grant. Uh, we, we go after this every year. Uh, we utilize it to its full extent of the fifteen thousand that's allotted to us. Uh, this year, we've, uh, come to the highlights that we funded, uh, looking at ordering twelve sections of five-inch supply line, which is, uh, usually utilizing the street all the time when you see we hook the plugs for the pumpers. And then, uh, ten, I believe, pagers at five hundred dollars apiece. Uh, the money overage of two hundred dollars or any other that comes in there, if we decide to order extra because of the Co-Stars pricing will come out of support equipment line item. And that is all we have. We went to Public Safety with a, uh, rep positive recommendation to bring it before you folks this evening. Thank you.
Okay, um, Public Safety.
Chief spoke for me. We passed this with a positive recommendation. I would add very quickly too with Adams' presentation, that was Co-Stars too. Is that correct, Adam?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so both those are to our advantage at the same time. Uh, this is something that keeps our service providers, uh, with the best possible equipment. And, uh, we, we know that the chief has been on top of that for some time now and, and keeping us updated. And it also reflects back on keeping our residents safe and the performance of their duties. And certainly, we want to preserve as much property as possible. And I think a five-inch fire hose does wonders for something of that nature. Again, as the chief said, we passed this with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, thank you. Just to, just to, uh, reiterate that, uh, we're, we're thankful for this state grant that we get every year. And, uh, and so we're glad to use it up. And of course, we have, uh, money in our support equipment to take care of anything that's over, over and above. But, uh, this is, uh, easy, easy to, uh, pass something like this. So we're very thankful.
Thank you. And we, thank you, Chief Heckman, for being on top of these things. And you're very diligent about going after, uh, extra money that can...
Welcome. Thank you.
...help supplement the budget and the taxpayers of Williamsport. So thanks again. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Okay, uh, item nine, except for filing, Veterans Memorial Park Commission, January twenty-eighteen. Minutes, Public Works, December twelfth, twenty-seventeen minutes. And Public Safety, September fifth, twenty-seventeen minutes. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions, corrections, or comments on these minutes? None? Uh, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Uh, we're down to, uh, item ten, announcements. The next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held Thursday, March first, twenty-eighteen, seven-thirty PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, upcoming meetings, uh, Monday, February nineteenth, City Hall's closed. Tuesday, February twentieth, at twelve PM, the Planning Commission. At three-thirty PM, ERC meeting. We don't have anything on the agenda right now, but I'm gonna keep that open just in case we need that. Six-thirty PM, Harb. Wednesday, February twenty-first, at four PM, the Charter Commission. Tuesday, February twenty-second, ten AM, Health Screening. One PM, Finance Committee. Two-thirty PM, Public Works. Three-thirty PM, Public Safety. Monday, February twenty-sixth, three-fifteen PM, the Ad-Hoc Residency Committee meets. Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, eleven-thirty AM, Redevelopment Authority. And Thursday, March first, seven-thirty PM is our council meeting, uh, as mentioned before. Um, any questions, comments from, uh, council members? Not, uh, administration tonight. Um, any one from the public? Mr. Miller, okay, then you're on deck.
Scott Miller, eight-twenty-two Tucker Street. Two weeks ago, I came and was addressing some of the costs associated with the MS four. Ironically, that Sunday in the editorial in the Williamsport Sun Gazette, uh, Mr. Robert D. Feesmeyer Jr., he's a township supervisor up in Hepburn Township. He had something in the paper where he has more correct numbers than I did. And he breaks it down by each jurisdiction. In the next five years, Williamsport has to come up with twenty million, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, six hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars, or each year, four million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars to meet the MS four mandate. Now, I know y'all passed it on to the Sewer and Water Authority to add it as a fee and they got a formula, some will pay a little more, some a little less, depending on their ability. But I think too many people forget that there's quite a number of elderly and disabled people in this town that are on a fixed income and just don't have that ability. And there's a lot of poor people are, are, uh, what I call, you know, borderline poor that it's a huge inconvenience to them. I think we also forget at times that a few years ago, the Chesapeake mandate, our sewer system had to be upgraded to meet the, the, uh, Chesapeake Bay mandate, not putting phosphorus and nitrates into the system. And that cost a lot of money. I know my water and sewer bill, uh, has doubled, if not more than doubled, you know, from that. And it's not that, you know, this one thing is that bad, or that thing is that bad, or the dyke. But it's an accumulation of things. You know, the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back kind of a thing. And I just worry that people forget that there are some of us that are on fixed incomes. You know, they don't get a raise. Or, you know, I remember a few years back, Social Security recipients got one-point-seven percent increase and the governor of Pennsylvania got a two-point-two. How much are the city employees getting in raises each year, average? You know, are they getting the same kind of a thing as what people on fixed incomes are getting? No. You know, so, you know, it seems like it's not that much. But say, every year inflation was five percent and you got three percent. One year, it's not too bad. You know, maybe you go to the barber once or twice less per year. But after so many years of these constant cuts and hits, you know, it's a death of a thousand cuts, you know? And, and I just worry that too many people have forgotten about this. You know, there's a lot of people in this town that it's going to devastate. You know, I mean, you can say, "Well, you know, we're gonna make it as affordable as we can." But some people, you know, I remember helping out one lady, she got seven hundred dollars a month to live off of and her medical insurance goes up more than what her increases are. Uh, and her taxes go up. All these different things keep going up and up and up. Pretty soon, they can't afford to stay in their house. You know, is that what we are? My family was from College Park, Maryland. We were the second house, private house in College Park, Maryland. It got to the point that we were physically taxed off of our family property that had been in the family for four generations because of taxes. And you can say, "Well, it's not a tax, it's a fee." No, that's semantics. Because y'all have given them the authority to do this because... How much of a tax increase would you have to have to come up with four million dollars in a year? Do you think any one of y'all would be re-elected if you raised taxes to cover four million dollars a year? And that's not with the levy, that's not with Graffias run, that's not raises for city employees, that's not anything extra. That's just that one thing, just that one thing. So I hope y'all keep this in mind when you give the Water and Sewer Authority this fee privilege to levy on to people. You know, because it's gonna devastate our community. And I know there's a lot of people that have moved out or moving out because they ain't gonna pay it. You know, and then there's a lot of people, like me, I'm stuck. I can't afford to move out. Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right, Ralph Keller, two-oh-three U Street, uh, Mr. Allison, council and members of administration. I'm glad the fire chief is here because I wanted to say a far, a few words about the fire department. Most of you probably saw there was a fire Monday night out of Mary Street, right behind Bishop Newman. I want to say a few comments about it. I just happened to be leaving the house at the time of the fire and I heard the engines going up the Boulevard, Washington Boulevard. Went to get in the car and I thought, gee, it's awful foggy. I didn't see fog. And then it hit me, it wasn't fog, it was smoke. I thought, column of smoke, fire company, that's the fire. My heart sank to my shoes when I looked where it was and realized it was right behind Bishop Newman, coming right from the area of our rental property. So I got in the car and as I drove down Germania Street and got closer, my heart sunk even further when I could see the flames and realize that it was definitely either my house or the one next door that was burning. When I got to Mary Street, thank God it wasn't mine, it was the one next door. A couple of comments, that means a lot to me and I was really upset because it's our homestead that burned at nine-thirty-two. My grandfather built the house nineteen-eleven. Mom and the whole family grew up there. My aunt was literally born in the front bedroom, feet below where the fire burned, lived there her whole life and it was in our family till about fifteen years ago. So that house meant a lot to me. And it was really difficult watching the flames and it was really rolling when I got there, coming out of that house. So that hurt, just it was a homestead. Even worse, we have the rental property next door. And make matters worse, my uncle years ago planted a pine tree in the yard, which has grown so tall, it's almost touching both properties. And I could see the tree catching fire and spreading to my house. So I was pretty worried. Anyway, I was so relieved when Chief Heckman and his men showed up. They knocked the fire down in an amazing amount of time. Saved the tree, saved my house. And I went over the next morning to look at the damage and I was shocked. I have never seen such a neat fire. There was tremendous fire coming out and I've been to fires where I've seen firemen do more damage than the fire to a house. They did almost no damage to the house other than what the fire did. Power was still hooked up, no windows broken on the first or second floor, even two of the attic windows were still intact. All they really chopped out was the front wall where the fire was. No holes in the roof, uh, was totally amazing. They saved the house, it could be rebuilt. They also saved my house. So with all that, publicly, I would like to thank Chief Heckman in public and on TV and all the firemen for thank you for saving our homestead, my house, all your hard work, and then the other volunteers. Uh, I would also be remiss if I didn't make a comment about the city fathers because current and past councils and administrations have allowed us to have this fire department. I know it's tough every year at budget time, but you have provided an excellent department. You provide the trucks, the equipment, the turnout gear, uh, the training and everything else involved. We, this, this could not have happened. We have an excellent department. They did a fantastic, fantastic job. Uh, one of the reasons I live in this city is because I like having paid police, paid fire, paid public services. And I like having a fire hydrant thirty feet from my house just in case. Uh, I know it's tough at budget time, but you'll never hear me complain about paying taxes for those public services. So just again, chief, thank you and your men. That's all I have to say.
You're here.
Thank you. Yes, we agree. I think that's it for tonight. I'll entertain a moment, uh, motion for adjournment. And I'll, uh, remind, and, uh, once again, we're going to go into, uh, executive session for legal and personnel matters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.